Okay, there's a Wellington Board of Education regular meeting, August 11th, 2020. And the time is about 7:05. And I'd like to call our meeting to order. Next order of business is pledge allegiance. Well, if everyone would stand, we will. Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next order of business is present to speak. I don't know if we have anything going on, but basically, we would like to have anyone that does speak to give their name and address. And then proceed with. And you will have five minutes. And the total amount, a lot of time will be about 20 minutes. So we're going to kind of streamline our meeting tonight. And make sure that you do not address any specific personnel issues. And this is according to Board of Education Policy 9325. Okay, do we have anyone present to speak?
Hello. Ed Dinkowski, my address is 19 Ridgewood Road, Wellington. That's D Y M K O W S K I. My son and daughter are both students at Center Elementary School. And we had a meeting last evening with Superintendent Stevens. First, I'd like to go on record by saying that we appreciate all the plans and the work that Superintendent Stevens and his committee have done. He's gone above and beyond, and we greatly appreciate that. And the fact that he looks out for the students as much as he does is appreciated by just about every parent. One of the discussion items in last night's meeting revolved around the inclusion of student teachers and students from University of Connecticut. And some concern was stressed that perhaps this may not be a good idea, considering the typical behavior of the typical college student, regardless of whether they're an education student or not. I think all of us can relate based on what we've seen on the media of behaviors of students, of, you know, people in their twenties behaving in manners that may not be the most smart regarding the current health pandemic. So I just wanted to voice that concern and see if there was some way that accommodations could be made so that students can opt out of classes that have those UConn students. Or if there's some way that that arrangement could be put off for this year. Now, I understand Superintendent Stevens' concern regarding the agreement he made with University of Connecticut. But I feel as well, I know many other parents feel that under these unique circumstances with the current health crisis, that perhaps that agreement could be overlooked this year, or other arrangements could be made to not include these UConn students in the classroom.
Okay, thank you very much, Anthony, for your concerns. And we will take it under advisement. Are there any other citizens on the?
For anyone that's not on camera, if you click your participant tab in the middle, it says participants, and then all the way in the lower right, there's three dots. You can raise your hand, click this, if you click those three dots, it says raise hand. You can do that. Last chance. I believe that is it, Herb.
Okay. We do have another section present to speak later on on the agenda. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is Chairman's Report. I'll keep this fairly brief. As Chairman of the Wellington Board of Education, I'm pleased to communicate with you concerning an update of the Wellington Public Schools and Services. As you know, or most likely aware of the fact that the Wellington Public Schools established a reopening advisory committee. And this evening, the Board of Education and the superintendent will review this plan that they have developed. In addition to the challenges necessary to control current 19 pandemic, the Wellington Public Schools this year will make every effort to still offer high quality and cost education to the students in the Wellington Public Schools. Continue to make every effort to provide quality education for our students. The next item on the agenda, communications. Received a letter from Michelle. And that issue, we will hold temporarily until next September. And Michelle is in agreement with that. Okay, are there any other communications? Bill?
Not for me, no.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a lengthy report of the superintendent of schools.
Yeah, sure, this one's short. So just two quick things around staffing. Don Castle, Food Services Director, we had hired Don Castle. And unfortunately, he had to resign for personal reasons. And so we just hired Stephanie Knight today. And who happens to be Wendy Knight's daughter-in-law. So we welcome Stephanie, she's already kind of following along with some of the things that Don had started, so that's good, she's moving along. And then we hired a grade two teacher today, we had an opening there. And we actually hired Claire Pass, who was a UConn intern at Center School last year, she's a recent graduate from UConn. So that was exciting. And then the only other thing on my superintendent's report today was the 2021 convocation. We usually do something really grand and in person. And that's very different this year, just because of the situation, obviously, with COVID-19. We are in the process of planning our professional development and our school opening. It's just not complete yet, you will, the board members will all get invitations to the initial kickoff of that, that convocation. And then, you know, we'll, we'll branch off into our professional development from there. But I will send you that invite once we have it. And there will be more conversation about that tonight when we get to the calendar. Share some more about that. That is my entire report this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the financial report. This is for the 2020, 2021 budget. We have about 18.5% remaining, I believe.
Yep, so you noticed that there's no 1920 on there today, where they're still closing up the books for 1920. So we'll bring in the 1920 closed books and transfers next meeting. I will tell you that the, what we'll call the Business Office has been working extremely hard as they transition to the new financial software program. They've been in training a lot. And the program is moving along. My staff, of course, was supposed to have training last week during the loss of power, that did not happen. So now they will be receiving training on Thursday, thankfully, there was a cancellation on Thursday. So we jumped on it. So my staff right now does not have the ability to put in purchase orders. Only Tish is the, the only person that can do that. So if we want to purchase something right now, it has to go to Tish, who is in the accounts table person. And so she's putting in those POs for us. And so some of the things, we're, we're holding a lot. We haven't ordered a lot, if we've had to order it, it's simply because we need to make sure we were going to get it in time for the start of school. So if you look at, you know, the report today, there are certain things in there that just haven't been entered yet, because it's only one person doing PO. The only programs that I wanted to highlight tonight, there, there is one around Center School. And that balance remaining of 163,000. One of those items that's there is that we, our current enrollment is still around 30 for kindergarten. And so we are not hiring a third teacher at this time, so there's extra funds there. Talk more about that later. Program four, the transportation appears to be in the negative, it is not, it's just, well, it is, but it's not. We incurred all that money, and remember that when we get money back from Region 19, that brings that balance above zero. And so obviously, that's, that happens throughout the year. And then the other program I wanted to talk about was Hall School. They have that $62,000 balance in theirs. And we have not filled that Spanish position yet. And so there's some, some, there's no applicants and we haven't filled yet. So more to come on that later on as well. So other than that, that's really all I have tonight. I think, once we finish the transition from our old software program to this, and all the training's been had, you're going to have a nice clean report come September. But they are still doing a lot of work, I really haven't had a lot of contact with the Business Office, because they are training a significant amount of time over there. And remember, that's for the town and for the board, so.
Bill, I've had a number of communications where our vendors have not received money yet, when can they expect payment on bills that we owe?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, because I think all of our, there was only like five POs that were still open. Anything that we haven't paid, are you talking about 1920, Herb?
Yes.
If, if it's 1920, any of the open POs that we had for bills, we were holding because the, if it was something that we had purchased, that we hadn't received all of them, or work that wasn't completed, we hold them until that work is completed, or we have the product as, as it was intended. If it's for 2021, the only one I know that we got so far was CAPE. And that they just sent out renewal things as soon as they, yeah, so it's July 1 renewal, that, that might be the only one that I know about.
Okay. Okay, is anyone else having questions at all about the budget? Okay, under new business, we have the presentation of the Wellington Public Schools Return to School Plan.
Yeah, so you've had this for a bit, and I just, I think the easiest way for me to do this is to do a presentation of a day, and let me just walk through kind of how we got where we are. And so the state of Connecticut released their Adapt Advance Achieve Plan for school districts to reopen in the fall, and they released it on June 29. They did not even give us a month to submit our response, it was July 24. And the plan, as you know, you saw it, it's a 50-page document. There's extensive attachments, there's, we still are getting additions and support documents. I just got something on Friday. And so we keep, the flow of communication continues. We, we created our reopening advisory committee, there was over 20 stakeholders in that group, including seven parents. And their task was really to break off into subcommittees and meet the requirements set forth by the state for reopening. There's items that you have choice on, and there's items you have no choice on. I want to take a second just to thank those parents that they spent a lot of time with us zooming, they're probably tired of seeing me. And just reviewing our, our plan and providing feedback. Victoria Lee, who's one of our parents and teachers. Tanya Smith, Sarah Anderson, Jeff Farrar, Kirsty Farrar, Desiree Daigle. They, they provide a lot of input, we're meeting again on Thursday. I also want to say that we had a whole host of teachers and administrators who have put a lot of time into this, this plan. It is still a draft, it will continue to be a draft. And I don't know that word will ever come off, and the reason why is this, it's meant to continually evolve as, as we get more information. But thanks to those folks for all their efforts, we greatly appreciate it. Obviously, in our, in this plan, our number one priority is, you know, the health and safety of our students and staff. Right behind that is, is student learning. Every, every district was required to develop three plans. A plan that was all in, everybody, all students on campus. A plan that was a hybrid model, which is some students on campus and some students learning remotely. And then a third prong that was all students remote. And so we developed those plans, they continued to be developed. I think the easiest way to kind of explain those, the only one that's a little quirky, I would say, is the hybrid model. And I just want to spend one second on that. The hybrid model, the intention of the hybrid model is to take 50% of your students that are attending to have small, much smaller class sizes. They go to school basically two days a week. We'll give you example, Monday, Tuesday would be an A group. Everyone would be remote learning on Wednesday. And then a B group would come in Thursday and Friday. That is when people, you hear it on the news, and they're talking about a hybrid model, that is what they're talking about. The other piece with the hybrid models, that you're supposed to have very few, a much smaller group of students on the buses. And so that's just a kind of quick down and dirty overview of what the hybrid model looks like. I think the easiest way to explain our plan and to make it come to life for you, because I know you looked at ours and it's, it's long, is just to walk you through a day on campus of what does on-campus look like? And how are we applying the things that are in that plan? Several items the committee is recommending, have a price tag, I'm going to tell you that. And the, the committee was adamant about several things. And I'm going to talk about what those things are. Let me walk you through a day. For any student that's taking transportation, they, we have done away with group bus stops for the year. We're going to do away with group bus stops, because we're just trying to avoid students being near each other. And we have a significantly smaller number of students that are being transported this year. So our times will be okay. When a student gets on the bus, they have to wear a mask. We had written into our plan that we would be putting pump hand sanitizers onto buses. I've been told it's a fire code issue, and we can't do that. So I'm fighting that. Because guess what every kid's going to get on the bus with in their backpack? Hand sanitizer. So I'm working with the state to see if we can get around that one. When students load the bus, they, they have to load back to front, there's no assigned seats. So when they get on the bus, they can sit with siblings. But there's a certain pattern that will, will have them sit so that, you know, they're spaced apart as best we can on the buses. When a student gets on the bus, the, the bus drivers, you know, doing a quick observation of them. They're not doing temperatures or anything like that, they're not asking questions, they're just making a quick observation. If they see someone that looks blatantly ill, they're going to call the school, and they're going to ask that child to hold there with their parents. That might be a little awkward, but it's for the safety of all. Every, every bus driver, every staff member, every parent is going to be responsible for completing what we're hoping to be a digital questionnaire every morning. It's basically four, five, six COVID questions. And that is a self-check. Does your, does your child have a fever? Do they have any symptoms of COVID-19? Have they been around anyone that has tested positive? There's a whole questionnaire that they're going to have to submit, we're trying to make it electronic, so it's snappy. And we're still working around, how do we manage it so that if a student gets to school and the parent has not completed that survey, we're going to be calling them, we're going to be handling it. If you do not take transportation to school, and you're driven in, which is a large number of our students, there's no early arrival this year to either of our schools. We have avoided any times where students are congregating in large groups where they are not in their cohort. That means 7:25 starts drop-off at Hall School and 8:25 at Center. We know that's a pain for some parents, because it's later. But it avoids the congregation and it meets our contractual time for our staff. So students, when they get dropped off, normally would wait in the hallway or in the library, they will not do that anymore, they will go straight to their classroom. We are working on procuring an app called, I want to say KidSafe, I always get it wrong. I think it's KidSafe, it's, it's an app basically that allows you to check a child into school. It's touchless, there's no sign-in, so if a parent drops them off, we can check that student into school. And we're also going to use that app as we dismiss students. It's done by telephone numbers, we, parents will have the opportunity to send in and say, this is the person that's picking my child up. We can have their pictures on there if we want, we can match their phone numbers, we do a lot of stuff. So it's meant to streamline. We may need to flip-flop our arrival and dismissal procedures, you may hear about this. The upper lot at Center School may be the bus lot. And the lower lot may be drop-off, because if we have 110 cars dropping students off and picking them up at the end of the day, we need space. And so we have to rearrange our, we're working on that, rearranging our spaces. Building access at drop-off by parents is limited. We are really going to limit who comes into our buildings. Any meetings during the day that are, could be a, you know, special education meeting, we're trying to hold a lot of those online. Again, it's so that, one, it's harder in space to put that number of people, six, seven, eight people into a room for meeting space and hold the distance, our conference rooms don't hold that number of people while maintaining the distance. We will have a drop-off with, for parents, if someone forgets their lunch or something, we'll have a drop-off at the door and they can ring the doorbell. When a student gets into school, all the staff will be wearing masks, when a student gets on the bus, they have to be wearing a mask. And all staff will be wearing masks, we purchase clear masks for all of our staff members, so they can see, students can see your face. That was very intentional, because, let's face it, it's, you're going to see some pictures in a couple of minutes. It's, it's a little bleak, the classrooms are a little dull. And we want students to see smiles, and they're going to see that from the staff. When students enter the buildings, there will be hand sanitizers. And they'll sanitize when they enter the building. We are working on touchless hand sanitizer appliances outside of every classroom, they are backordered, as you can imagine. We will pivot on that and put pump stations outside of classrooms, so they sanitize on the way in, kind of like a doctor does. Everyone will sanitize in, everyone will sanitize out, and I'll talk more about in a second. When a student enters their room, we are not using cubbies or lockers at either school. We're asking students not to bring any, you know, additional items from home unless it's for their schoolwork. They will hang their backpacks on their chair or put it behind their chair. And students are all in cohorts. That means that once, and we are still working on classless because of the number of students, families that are opting for remote learning only. A cohort means that those, I'm going to say 14 students, 12 students, whatever the number is, they stay together all day long, they do not mix with any other cohort. Okay? When, if they have a, a, something they need to go to, they do it as a group. And I'll talk about lunch and recess and all those things, but they will not mix with other cohorts. Students are all assigned a desk, and they will all have a bin with their materials, we have purchased bins directly from, I think it was, whatever the name of that bin company is. And everyone, basically, it's a, what I call a pencil box on steroids. It's big, it's like nine by 12, it's seven inches deep, it can fit a Chromebook, a sketchpad for art, pens, pencils, markers, crayons, erasers, all of it. All of those items will be in a bin for every student. We will even provide bins for students that are remote learning, because if we are going to ask them to do something, parents will have that bin. And if they start, if they come back to school, they're going to be expected to bring that bin with them. All right, we will communicate that. Catherine, can I share my screen for just a moment, please, because I want to show you a classroom? So this is an elementary classroom right now. And why is it important that I'm showing you, this is a class of 14 desks, you notice there's a table on the far side. And elementary teachers and teachers in general love their materials. You notice that there's, this room is absent of that. Almost all of the items are stored. This teacher would have some space for materials up here, but remember that students won't be sharing. So a lot of those materials, we want away, so they're not, students are not tempted to touch those things. Teacher desks are out of the rooms, they'll have a table that they can work with, with students. These desks are four feet apart from edge to edge, five and a half feet from center to center. If we have a class smaller than 14, obviously, we can stretch out the, the classes more, the students more. This is a class of 19, if we were all in and we had a class of 19, this is what that classroom would look like. Same four-foot distance between front and back, side to side. And this is again, an elementary classroom. The middle school classroom, and, and don't worry, I'm not going to have students climb over desks, it was just a, a chance to show you kind of spaced out what it would look like. This is a classroom of 21, we're not going to have a classroom of 21 at the middle school. But just to give you a sense of, if we had to pack in a lot of students, could we get spacing that was four feet apart? Pediatric, the National Pediatric Association says three feet is minimum, and that's okay. Especially when wearing masks, we've gone at four feet. I will tell you, we will probably achieve six feet because of the number of students that are choosing remote learning. Okay? So I wanted to give you a sense of what this looked like, again, this is a middle school class. And this is what the, the classrooms would look like if there, you know, with that number of students. You can close that again, Catherine. Thank you. Our survey data at this point, we have, we had about 219 responses from our, our families. We have over 100 students that are choosing remote learning already. About 25% of our population. About 10 are withdrawing to just do straight homeschooling. That means that the district is not responsible for them. And then of those students that are, are attending on campus, over 100 students will not take transportation at all. A, a large number of students are only going to take transportation one way. So our buses are going to be thinner, they're not going to have as many students on them, and our classrooms will be thinner. I want to address right now why I don't feel like we need to go hybrid. You have probably heard on the news, a lot of districts that are saying, where they're announcing they're going to a hybrid model already. The state forced us to make a decision last week where we believed, how we believed we would open. My response, because of what I saw in the survey data, that we would be opening in full. Opening in full still means we have 100 students, bless you, Elena. We still have 100 students that are learning from home, they're learning remotely. And so our numbers might be 12 in a classroom right now. If you went to a different district and they were a classes of 24, and they went to a hybrid model, they would be classes of 12, what we have in full. Okay? So that is the reason I am not choosing to go full at this, to go hybrid at this point in time. Our, our classes have a decent number of students, we're matching what other districts are doing. The other reason is, I will tell you that a hybrid model, in my opinion, really creates a hardship on parents. Students are in district for two days, and they're remote learning for three. That means that those parents, someone needs to be there with those children. And if we can keep those students in school at the same number someone else could do for hybrid, I think we should do that. Back to the school day. Students will have a schedule, just like they normally do, it's be, we're working on a new schedule for both schools right now. And the reason why is just because of the planned requirements and the things that we have to do, we had to adjust our schedules. They're going to look different until this pandemic lifts. And our schedules will include mask breaks, they're built in. Our intention is to do mask breaks every hour for about five minutes. And we're, we're building those mask breaks into our schedules, so that they're guaranteed. There won't be, will be one mask break that is a little bit longer each day, could be a recess period, and we are providing that pre-K through eight. Everybody will have that longer mask break time. We are looking at purchasing what I'm calling circus tents, I think it's very fitting for that, to call it circus tents right now and sit upons, so that if it rains, we need a space for students to go to get a mask break. Our staff is going to need a space to get mask break. So that is something that I'm going to talk about further along on the agenda tonight. I anticipate that we'll be doing outdoor instruction as often as possible. I will tell you that, you know, we know a lot about COVID-19, and if we're outside, we decrease risk a lot greater. And so that, I know that the staff will be finding spaces outside, and we'll be working on identifying those spaces. But the tents will be critical. Our unified arts classes will look different. All of our unified arts classes, for the most part, are going to occur in that cohort's classroom. So if I take a fifth grade classroom, those students stay in that classroom. If they're going to have a library special, that teacher would come into that classroom. There's a sign in for contact tracing purposes. That person, that person coming into the classroom has to sanitize and they will teach the library class in that classroom. Arts will be done in classrooms mainly through sketchbooks. And we'll make sure we supply some of those materials because students, again, can't share, otherwise it has to be wiped down. PE can happen in the gym with masks on if, or they can go outside. So that's one of the things I think PE will be outside for a while. Music is one of those areas where there's a, a lot of limitations on singing and playing instruments. Just because of the water molecules. I will tell you that Tracy Canastrari has done a boatload of research and pulled all the science she can, our band teacher at the middle school, to safely do band pullouts. And following those guidelines and, and special things. If you pick, picture a trumpet. He's got special masks that go over the trumpet so the kid can still blow and it, it is covered. There's covers for the end of the trumpet. And they still have, they have a larger spacing. They may be doing this outside. There will not be pullouts by instrument. So it won't be a group of trumpets coming from different classes. If she does a pullout group from a fifth grade classroom, she has to pull from that same court. The music program will operate the same way. So there could be three students doing band. They could come out of that classroom and go to the band room. One might be playing trumpet, one might be playing trombone and one might be playing flute. They will have to learn that together, they'll be spaced out and they're still in their cohort. So that is kind of how music will happen. If it's a general music class, it will be in the classroom. If a student wants to leave a classroom and when a teacher or a staff member who has entered that classroom wants to leave, they must sign out. They must wash their hands. And if the student is going to the bathroom, they have to wash their hands before they leave the classroom. They wash their hands in the classroom, they go to the bathroom. We have a limit on the number of students in the bathroom. They use the bathroom, they wash their hands again, they come back to class and they actually have to sanitize to come back in. And again, it's just from the standpoint of, let's just picture elementary students here. From the time a student leaves the bathroom, the time they get back to the class, we just don't know where their hands have been and what they've touched. Alright, so it's just the safest way to do it. Our, our buildings will all have social distancing and signage throughout about, you know, just the, what the symptoms are, what we're looking for about hand washing, proper coughing. We're going to teach all the students those things. There will be no group lunches. They will be in the classrooms. This is the only time students will be taking, able to take their masks off is when they take a drink or if they are eating in their classrooms. It is the only time. I do anticipate there's going to be teachers that are going to take their classes outside for lunch. So that way they can be outside and not in their classroom as well. We are providing wipes to clean desks. And then we are also providing our classroom teachers with spray bottles that are disinfectants. A teacher has a, a table at the front of the room if they want to work with a student. They, that student can come up and work with the teacher one-on-one. But before that, when that student goes back to the desk, before another student can come and sit down, that has to be sprayed with a disinfectant, it has to sit for three minutes, the table and the chair. The teacher will wipe it down and then another student can come in. That has to happen between every single student that comes to that space. Recession is going to be done in cohorts. I will tell you that recess is one of the most challenging areas that our committee is working on right now. It sounds silly, but it's because the majority of recess things where it's free play are, they're hands-on, they're sharing equipment. The placecapes will not be open. We do not have the personnel to wipe placecapes between use between cohorts. It will take a significant amount of time. So things like, we are spraying lines, we will spray lines and grid lines on the playgrounds. If there's two or three classes out there at a time, they'll have to stay away from each other. They'll have their own spaces. But we're working on creative solutions. Victoria Lee came up with the idea of, can we somehow project yoga on a screen? Can we project some dance class so kids can dance if they want to? We're trying to come up with creative ideas for students to do a recess. Because they can take their mask off, but if they're under six feet, it's got to be backup. Let's talk to, if we come into re, from recess and we're back in the classroom, we're talking about symptoms. Any staff member or student with symptoms? If a student is going to leave a classroom, that teacher is calling the nurse's office to let them know that that person's coming. And they're really saying, hey, just a sniffle or, you know, it doesn't look good, there's multiple symptoms I'm seeing. And that nurse is going to get into full PPE. We have an isolation room in both nurses' offices at Center and Hall Schools. It's a separate room from the nurse's office. We actually stole their desk space. And the reason why is because it's behind a closed door, it is through glass, we can see students, we can observe them. And it has a window. And so that is, we are required to have an isolation room and we do. If a student is going to be picked up from school, that parent will actually buzz and they will never come in the door. We will escort that student out and they will, again, use that app to sign their child out. This is one of the areas that superintendents are kind of yelling loudly about. Is that we are still waiting on very clear guidelines about health protocols. How long do you have to stay out? How many symptoms are we looking at? Who needs a test? If you get a negative test but have symptoms, can you come back to the building? We are still arguing about that because it's not clear yet. I have a, a conference call tomorrow in Eastern Highlands again. We did get some information on Friday. I am confident that we will have this information by the start of school. And we're going to be able to communicate to families and staff. But we are still working to identify all of the specific criteria that we're going to utilize at the start of school. Drink of water, sorry, I'm talking a lot. Let's talk about dismissal. Buses are going to unload one at a time and at dismissal time, buses will load one at a time. We will also do student pickup at the same time. I anticipate the student pickup might be a little bit longer. We might have to start student pickup a little bit earlier. So when a student's family is there, it might be three o'clock at Center School where normally it would be 3:23. But it could take us a, a while to dismiss all of our students. In contractually, we need to make sure that all of our students are out of our, our teacher's classroom by a certain time. Because that's what the contract requires. Okay? And I will abide by that. I will say, one of the areas that our committee is really, the committee is really adamant about doing is the hiring utility people. And I'm going to talk about this a little bit more later on, but I wanted to give you a sense of why. The number of people it's going to take to do the things that we need to have happen during the day is significant. These are temporary people. They are not people that I think beyond COVID, they don't, there, there's no job there. And these utility staff that I think I mentioned last board meeting, they could be bus monitors at the start of school to make sure students know what to do and where their masks go. They could help clean buses in between runs. They could be substitute teachers or paraprofessionals. If we, every, every superintendent is very concerned right now about substitute teachers. We were worried about that in the past pre-COVID and this makes it even harder. So if I don't have a teacher for a classroom, we are stuck. We're going to have emergency closings because I don't have anybody to put in those classrooms. These utility people could be, could deliver lunches. Because those lunches will be brought to classrooms. They could offer support in the nurse's office as needed. We are required to do clean touchpoints during the day. They could help do that. Touchpoints or railings and doorknobs and things like that. They could help do those things. Teacher coverage, so that a teacher has their, their playing time to cover recess. Any of those things, we need people to do that. And again, they're temporary people. You're going to hear more about costs shortly. What moves us from a full into a hybrid model to a remote? This is an area they're still working on at the state where we've received information that they're looking at this regionally. We are right on the border of our region. Tolland is in a different section. And what's really interesting is our region goes all the way over to the Rhode Island border. If Killenly has a breakout, we are lumped into a group of Killenly. And I'm, you know, what Department of Health is saying is that they're going to look at the number of cases per 100,000. But they're also going to look locally. And I'm going to advocate, if the breakout's in Killenly and we're okay in Wellington, I don't recommend us going remote. Just because we're in the same region. If our case is in our general specific area or in Wellington pop, that's where we would change our models. And we will have to consult with the State Department of Education. We have to consult with our, our nursing liaison, our medical advisor. And we have to consult with Eastern Highlands Health District. So it's not, this is not a decision made in isolation. It's a decision that will be made based upon the facts and what we know. So that's kind of how we go from model to model. Let's talk about instruction for a minute. If, if we have a lot of students that are picking remote, what's it going to look like for them during the day? We are working with teachers to be able to Zoom at certain times of the day. So that someone at home, if they want to receive live instruction, they're only going to see the teacher. They're not going to see their classmates. And if they're on Zoom, they're not going to see the other kids that are on Zoom because their cameras will be off. But they can see what the teacher's doing on the smartboard. They can talk to the teacher if they have a question. I am not requiring teachers to, to do that for a 60-minute lesson though. I'm requiring it, we're working together to do it for, for small snapshots. The introduction to a lesson, 10, 12 minutes. And then they're going to pause it. If the student that is learning from home that's remote is not there, that video will be posted later on. It is not an educational record for any student. So it's not something that can be FOI-able or we're not breaking FERPA. And, and that video could be viewed by that student at any time. So if those, they're learning remotely and that their family couldn't be there, they actually get to watch it and do the work when they can. So that's, they'll have live and recorded instruction. And we're working with our teachers to, to be reasonable about that. I will tell you, I have no expectation. If a teacher is going outside with their class, they must provide the student at home some remote learning options. But if they're going outside of the class, they are not going live. Because I'm not having them do it on their cell phones. We don't have the wifi outside to be able to do that. If we go remote only, picture it's the same thing. Remote learning would be, a teacher could pre-record something if they want and play it for teacher, for students. Or they could go on live at a certain time. Again, if students are not there, it would get posted afterwards. And they will have access to their students, they'll create times to do that. But we have to have balance between our students and our families and our teachers to make it work and work well. One of the issues we're facing right now is that you have heard a lot of places are calling hybrid. They're going hybrid and they're starting hybrid. And what's causing the problems is a lot of our district, a lot of our teachers live in different districts. And so now their children are only going to school two days a week. And they don't have childcare. And so one of the things I've been working on the last two days is working with Parks and Rec, Human Services. I've visited local daycares. We're going to be talking to the YMCA. We're trying to find methods to provide local onsite childcare for our staff. And the reason why is because, let's face it, if our teachers are not here, folks, we can't have school. I need their teachers here. So even though their child might be remote learning, we're trying to provide some options for them so they can be here. That's one of the latest hinks in our armor out, I will say, that's, it's creating challenges. Part of our plan you saw is identifying social emotional supports, no matter for our students and our staff. And I will tell you, our staff was a little shocked when I showed them pictures of our classrooms. I know they'll jazz them up, but they need supports too. You know, it's, this is a challenging time for all. And so we're trying to provide strategies whether you're, we're remote or hybrid or we're in session on campus. I will tell you, one of the things that I've seen and, and I love the ideas, the creativity of teachers just blows us away sometimes. I'm sure if you're on Facebook, you've seen these beautiful pit classrooms with round tables. They have cross dividers, every student has their own piece of the pie with an umbrella on top. They're illegal, we couldn't do that. Students have to be facing forward. The, the items on the material, on the, on the tables must be fire resistant. So we have to meet fire codes. So there are some wonderful ideas out there and I, I hate to shoot them down. But people need to understand that to jazz up some of those classrooms, we still have to meet our fire code. And, and so we have to be aware of that. Our cleaning protocols, we've spent a significant amount of money and time planning and prepping for our cleaning protocols. Bathrooms during the day will be cleaned twice. They will be closed for 10 minutes in staggered times. So that the custodians can go in, they have backpack sprayers now. They will disinfect the entire bathroom and just hose it down. It stays closed for a period of time and they'll wipe it down and then it's disinfected. They will do that twice while students are there. They will again do it at night. And that's all bathrooms. They'll be doing touchpoints during the day and then they'll also use those backpack sprayers. At the end of the day, they'll actually do the classrooms. They'll spray down tables, they'll spray down desks, they'll spray down chairs, they'll do all of it. And they'll do that every single night. As you can imagine, with all the things I'm sharing, it's going to take some additional professional development for our staff. So they know our protocols, they're following our protocols, whether it's safety, whether it's cleaning, whether it's instruction. Because there's lots that's changing. So we're going to talk later about the school calendar. And I'm going to be promoting some additional professional development and adjusting our, our calendar. The last thing I wanted to share about the plan, allow you to ask some questions, is around our ventilation. One of the things that was, this is what was basically in, in the state's requirements was a one liner. It was like meet Department of Public Health requirements for ventilation. That was it with a link. You click the link and then up pops this big document. And basically what it says is, they're very aware, schools are, it's challenging for, for proper ventilation if you have older buildings. Number one. Or two, if you have newer buildings with AC and they share air. And so what they said was a, a reasonable solution that meets the requirement is to open windows. It does not exchange air though. And that was, is one of the things that, meaning like it's not exhausting air and bringing air in. It's just, it's, it's stagnant basically. And so we were hired Colliers International to come in and do an evaluation at both schools of our ventilation system. And so Colliers came in, I just literally got the report this afternoon, I haven't even read it yet. But we, Matt Jensen, who's a maintenance custodian at Center, took a peek at it and said, we're, we're definitely on the right track. There, there's a few things in there. Number one, Center School, the classrooms all have intake and exhaust in the lower wing. We are making sure all of those fans are operating and operating the way they're intended to do. Which means one of the vents is pulling air in and one is exhausting the air. They do, are not shared between classrooms. That is the entire lower wing at Center School. Any of the spaces that are air conditioned at Center, we are not having students in. We will have them in the hallways, it's in the hallways, it's in the library, it's in the cafeteria, in the lower wing. But there's no, they're not using that space. And that's one of the, the areas that we were looking at. The upper wing at Center, and this is kind of the bad news, is that the upper wing at Center, when they put on the new roof, we had, they sealed up the intake and the exhaust. We were told we did not need that. And this is pre Phil Stevens as superintendent. And I, I want to say that basically what we found out is all of the duct work is in the upper wing and it's closed off right now. So we have a quote coming in to open up that roof in the upper wing to put the, an exhaust piece of equipment up and intake on the roof. And without voiding our roof warranty. And so that way, all of the upper wing, except for the last two classes, they have all the duct work except the last two classes. The last two classes, we will add the duct work so they have the same benefit. And that will be the exhaust and the intake. Any class that does not have that by the start of school, we will be putting window fans, small window fans. You can't use fans in classrooms to blow on people, but you can put a window fan in to blow air out of a classroom. That would be acceptable, acceptable exhaust. And we will do that for at Center. Hall School, the 12 classrooms that, where students will be, was, they were built in the 50s. Those 12 classes do not have any duct work. They do not have any intake or exhaust. So that is going to be the bill that I'm going to share with you later on, that I think long-term. Opening the windows is a great solution until it's November. Um, because at some point, you're either going to pay for the heat and you're going to be cranking the heat because the windows are open. Or you're going to pay for something to do exhaust. We're, we would put the, um, temporary fans in those classrooms. Again, windows open and acceptable short-term solution. We will leave the windows open. We would put the exhaust fans into those windows so they can blow the air out. But long-term, we need a better solution and I anticipate that is what Collier is going to do and we're already looking at that. Um, so that's kind of a, a really fast snapshot of our 55-page plan. Um, it's not every detail, but I wanted to give you a chance to ask questions, provide feedback, share your concerns, uh, share your, um, raises, what you think is, is a good plan and you can keep moving along because there'll be more tonight around this, uh, when we get to the, the costs.
I've got a couple of questions briefly. We have a hundred, 100 students that will be home online.
Correct.
Are they missing out on the protocol and all of the information that you've given us regarding, uh, safety and health and use of the building and everything? If they're home, not in getting the, uh, uh, hands-on information at school. Uh, also do we have tents? You mentioned that in your report, yeah, there, in, in the works and they're only going to be good until October, November. You can't, it's out in the winter maybe, but. And the other thing is that Center School, if I remember, we put in, uh, quite a few sinks and there's water for washing hands and things of that kind. I don't know if every room has it, but almost every room. So they're in pretty good shape in Center School. Hall School is just the opposite. To my recollection, there aren't as many sinks and things like that, except for science maybe and down near the gym. How are we going to cope with that?
So, uh, your first question, the remote, the students, the state's requirement was that, uh, if families wanted to, they, they were really promoting in-person learning. Um, and they, it's not been a secret. They're really pushing that, they really feel like our data supports that, that students can go back safely. There's, some people feel differently about that. And so it's a requirement that, uh, if, if parents want to choose to stay home and have, keep their children home and learn remotely, um, that they can. Um, and so we have to meet them where they are. And so we're still required to educate those students. Um, and you know, it's, it may look a little different than what's in the classroom and the face-to-face time will look, definitely look different because we still have to look, work within contractual hours for our staff. But we're required to do that. The state has put out, um, some additional resources on their website. Um, I have not had a tan, a chance to go through all of them, but from what I've heard from other superintendents, um, that they look good. So yes, they are going to have a different experience. Regarding the tents, I could not move on the tents because it's not budgeted and you have to vote on it. Um, I will tell you that the, the tents cost some bucks. It's a lot of money. And I'll talk about that in the next thing when we get to reopening costs. And yes, Herb, um, almost every room that we have, uh, has a sink. And I believe every room we're putting students into, uh, I've been told has a sink. I can confirm that, but I believe that that's why we chose those spaces, um, including Hall School.
Okay.
And can you unmute Anne please, Catherine?
You identify yourself and then just, uh, ask your question or comment.
Okay. Hi, Anne Grosjean. I have three questions. Um, when you do the arts, art, music, PE, library, um, I heard a really excellent suggestion on one of the governor's reports. One district was going to break them into blocks. So they might have art first for six weeks, then they might have music and then they might. And what that did is that, um, decreased the exposure. So those teachers are not going into every single classroom every single day once or twice. So I didn't know if that was something you had considered.
Let me, can I answer that first?
Sure.
So, so yes, we are considering that. And that's one of the reasons why we're looking at scheduling, um, is that we're trying to find out, we have shared staff, you know, uh, we have, uh, people that are between buildings and so they would see every student in the district in a, in one week. And we're trying to see if there's a way that we can limit, even if it's, you know, five classes instead of, uh, 30 classes. So we're trying to determine that within our schedules. I can't guarantee it yet, but those are, that's why we're looking at brand-new schedules for this COVID time to make sure we're minimizing risk for, number one, our students and number two, our staff. Um, so it's, you know, it, it's definitely something we're, we're trying to do.
Okay. My second question, you led right into it. What is the comfort level of the staff right now? Are they comfortable coming back? Um, how, did you do any, was there any way to find out how they were feeling?
And they're feeling the same way that, that families are feeling. Um, there's a lot of information out there. I will say, and sometimes information is, is alarmist and sometimes it's scientific and sometimes it's someone's opinion. They're worried, for sure they're worried. And, and you know, I think, I've had three staff Zooms, um, so far. They've been extremely well attended. I, I will tell you, Anne, that I think, um, people are feeling more confident in the things that we're putting into place. It's hard just because you want to see it. Um, and, you know, until you see it and live it, uh, it's, it's, it's a little unsettling. And so there are, there are some folks that are nervous. There's some folks that are really ready to go and we have, we're going to work, and that's why I said, the emotional piece for staff is just as critical right now for our students because students can read all of our staff members' face. Um, and so, you know, we're, we have to work with our staff members and that's why I've been holding the Zooms. I think it was yesterday, the days are blending. I did one yesterday for our staff. I did a parent Zoom last night. It's getting them the information again, just like I did tonight. How was our plan coming to life? And I'm trying to be as transparent as possible. When I say we're going to put, um, hand sanitizers on the bus and I can't get them because of fire code, I'm telling people, I'm not hiding that I can't do those things. So I'm trying to be as transparent as I can. Um, and, and I, that's all I can do.
Okay. And are there options? So if someone health-wise could not return, are there options?
So there's very specific guidelines that, um, you know, are under the FMLA. It's not necessarily FMLA, it's, it's a, a branch of FMLA. They have to meet certain pieces. Um, I have a, a phone call with the attorney tomorrow to look at some of the requests. Um, and I would say that, is there an option? Remember that if someone goes, is not in school, you'll have to hire someone else to be in school to supervise those kids. So if we can avoid, and this is the reason I'm looking at childcare for staff, because it's significantly cheaper. Even if the board paid for every penny of it, it's significantly cheaper than paying two members for one person. Um, so we're looking at all those options. Again, I have to, I have to follow what the law says around FMLA. Um, and, uh, the, you know, the, 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 the specific act that has extended that, that's linked to COVID-19. I have to honor it if they meet the requirements. If they don't meet the requirements, we have a decision-making to be quite, again, transparent. It's a financial decision.
Right. Um, I have an out-of-the-box suggestion for your teacher.
You're coming out of retirement?
No. No, no, that won't be happening, but I won't be able to volunteer anymore. That makes me sad. But I have an out-of-the-box idea for the teachers with children. What if they were allowed to come to Wellington and attend school here somehow?
So one of the options, I think Glastonbury has offered this. Um, uh, they might have more space to be able to do it so their classes don't grow. But I know Glastonbury, you can only be written-rolled in one place. This is one of the ideas that we're looking at as of this, uh, yesterday, when we started this conversation. Um, is that, uh, Glastonbury is allowing for one year, uh, to be tuition-free for any of their, uh, employees. If their employees' children want to come in and be a member of the Wellington District, they would not be charged to be able to do that. Again, that's the same concept as providing childcare because they know it's going to be cheaper because their staff will be working as opposed to they're all out three days a week and we're paying someone else to come in. And it ruins the continuity for a classroom. Um, so yeah, I mean, those are things that we're looking at and they're.
Yeah.
All, there's no.
Because it wouldn't be an issue. If you had to go hybrid, the children would just travel back and forth, forth with their parent, you know? So, um, rather than trying to.
And one of the issues is I, we're, we're, we're looking right now, we're collecting data on ages because I can't overwhelm a specific cohort.
Right.
I don't want to, and then, you know, if we add, say we had a bunch of, uh, teachers where they're all, they have a bunch of eight-year-olds. We have six eight-year-olds come in and then we have a lot of eight-year-olds that were remote learning and now they want to come back and suddenly our classes have ballooned. What, what do you do then? So again, there's pros and cons to all those things, but yes, we're looking at that for sure.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Phil.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ann.
Donna has her hand up.
Who was next?
Donna's being unmuted, I think.
Donna?
She should be able to do it for you, Donna. You should, there you go.
I had to click something so we're unmuted. Um, I have several questions. I really liked, first of all, I really liked, um, Anne's idea about looking into the staff's children, um, just joining our classes if that's feasible. Because it, we already have, if, you know, if we have this space and then you're not concerned about other, providing other childcare workers for them and having to either pay for it or help subsidize it in the back and forth. Um, couple of things though. The long-term ramifications of all this sanitizer, are we going to allow the kids to bring like moisturizer or something? Because if they're sanitizing so often, I'm concerned about, then they're, you know, your skin cracks and then you're open to other things.
Yeah, they definitely can. They can, they can bring lotion.
So the other thing is, excuse me, I didn't know if it was possible that maybe occasionally a cohort would be able to use the playscape like one day a week or one day every couple of weeks and then just let it sit untouched for two or three days so you don't have to worry about sanitizing it just for an occasional option and something different for the kids to play on.
I like the idea. I just can't see it every day, every, every hour, but that's.
But if, if, if cohort A plays on it on Monday and then on week one, and then cohort B does Wednesday and then somebody else does Friday, you can kind of do it that way. Um, the other thing is has to deal with the buses and it's multiple parts. So one is, since there's going to be a decrease in bus ridership, can we decrease the number of buses we have to save some money there to help offset some of these other costs?
Potentially. We're looking at that right now. Um, we're looking at our runs because the, we're trying to match up the number of people and we have not told people it's set in stone yet. The next time we, next survey we do, that is where they're basically signing off and saying, we're going remote and we're, we're waiving transportation. They can come back in one week and we have to provide onsite learning or, or transportation. Um, but we have to see where, if there's specific cohorts of kids, like, I don't know if the, one, there's two neighborhoods in town where everyone's doing remote learning and it saves us a ton of time. We don't know that yet. But we're, we're definitely looking at, if we don't need as many buses, um, can we not get charged for a pre-K run instead? So we're, we're looking at that for sure.
Okay. And also related to the buses, you spoke about bus monitors and them cleaning the buses. Um, wouldn't it be better to make provisions for the bus driver who's already on the bus to do that instead of adding another adult to the bus environment? Um, and that way, because then if you have somebody, the bus, if the bus driver ends up getting sick, then you know that the bus has been contaminated. But if you now add another individual into the bus, you're just increasing the likelihood of there being a problem. Is that possible?
It is. We're also looking at the potential, uh, you know, I don't know that we need the bus monitors pre-K through eighth. Um, we may need bus monitors for the first couple of weeks. And this is kind of the approach that some districts are taking just to make sure students are wearing their masks. They know the expectations that, when they get on the bus. Uh, elementary students may need more reminders, I don't know. Um, but from the standpoint of, we were looking at more of, uh, the, the cleaning portion and the monitoring of masks to be worn. Uh, I will tell you, the transportation piece was one of the biggest concerns. Uh, because people were saying, well, they're allowing us to put 60 kids on a bus, but we have to cohort students when we get to school. That didn't make a lot of sense to superintendents. Um, so I'm glad our, our bus numbers are lower, um, but we can look into that.
Okay. The, the, the last thing, um, is, and I'm trying to find it because I just heard about it today and it was really exciting. There's something called OWL, O-W-L. And let me just see if I can find it. Um, so what it is, it's an electronic device that goes in the classroom. Um, it's used by Renaissance Charter School. And what that does is the teacher's teaching, but then if a student raises their hand, the other students that are on the virtual learning can see the student raise their hand and ask the question. So it makes, makes it much more interactive. I have no idea about feasibility or cost, but that sounded like a really great way to keep the kids that are learning from home or even on the days that are just, I don't think it would work when everybody, if everybody would be distant learning. I think you actually need students in the class. But it, it sounded like it would allow some semblance of normalcy and interaction. So I didn't know if you would have heard about it or if you could look into it.
We've looked at a couple of things that, um, these, a, a lot of these products that have come out were not because of COVID. That, a product like that actually usually comes out when you have a medically fragile student who can't be in district but can participate in class from home. And so literally it's kind of like a robot that could be at a chair and, and can look around and see people. It's a, you know, mobile camera based upon movements. Um, you can raise your hand, you can do a lot of things. So we're looking at those products that my, you're going to hear this when I get to the, the kind of spending portion of this is I'm trying to spend money, I want to spend money on things that long-term we can utilize and, and because I'm concerned that some of the, the things we're spending money on or other districts are spending, and I'm not throwing anybody into the bus when I say this, that some places are spending money on things that if they go remote, they're never going to use again. Or, you know, they're spending thousands of dollars on products they might never use again. But those are things that we're, we were looking at. And that's actually one of the things the teachers were asking about were webcams and what types of things, um, can we use that are going to make it more interactive for students at home? I will look at that for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Donna.
Michelle has her hand up.
Michelle?
Uh, two questions. One is, uh, it feels like it's a pretty heavy lift for teachers to both doing the teaching and doing the recording and monitoring and supporting kids who are not in their classroom. Um, is there any thought to redistributing staff so that person who may, uh, be less comfortable face-to-face with students is doing some of the live learning for that grade level and the other staff are doing the face-to-face?
Yeah. So, uh, number one, our staff are all pros now on Zoom.
I was thinking just the logistics of, you know, where do you put the camera? And how do you manage your group of kids plus the camera? It's one thing when you have just the camera.
Yeah.
Kids is a challenge.
We've definitely, and, and we've had conversations about this. That is definitely one of their concerns. And I'm trying to simplify it to say, look, if you have 60 minutes in a lesson and you click record at the beginning, um, it's, it's live. You don't have to do anything. You don't have to monitor there as long as you check, just like you walk around a classroom, you check on students and you go to their desks. You're walking back to the computer to check on those students there if they're there. Is it, um, a little bit harder? Yes. Um, and this is one of the reasons we talked about, you know, I'm, I'm, if they want to, just like they do their lesson planning, if they wanted to pre-record themselves for the class and the person at home, they could do. Um, it's, some of this is about comfort and, and, you know, I don't, I, I don't want them videotaping for 60 minutes. I want those mini lessons, get the core instruction and then it would, when it comes to the independent time, um, you know, they can click pause. And if they forget to click pause, so be it. But it's, it's definitely, there's going to be. But it's, it's definitely, there's gonna be a learning curve to it and um, it's, it's different, i- it's for sure. So I'm, I'm not, and I, and, and this will be clear to my administrators. We're, we're gonna work with our staff. We have to work with our staff, with our teachers. We have to be reasonable, just like we did in the spring. Um, saying that, you know, I can't ask teachers to be online from eight AM to three PM every day. It's not reasonable. It's just they can't do it if we're remote. Um, and so this is no different. We're trying to work with them and find reasonable solutions.
The second question has to do with health insurance. I think there's, um, I'm very concerned about uh staff and teachers who might be in the building, um, who don't have health insurance or who don't have an option to get health insurance, especially the utility people that you described, your utility staff. I was also thinking in terms of bus drivers, a lot of times part-time staff aren't eligible for health insurance. And it's very important, I think, to not have people who have an incentive to show up at work a little bit sick. We want them to be able to stay home. We want them to be able to go to the doctors if they're feeling even a little bit sick. So what plans do you have in place to make sure that everybody's?
Hang tight for the utility conversation, it's coming. Uh, the other folks, I don't know that there's really anybody else that's in the building that doesn't have access to insurance.
You know about the bus drivers?
I believe they're offered insurance, but I'm, I, I can check on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think they, I think they are. I will check that out, though.
Thank you.
Any other? Anne's got her hand up again.
I have a follow-up to Michelle's. Does everyone have a um adequate sick time too? So they didn't pay sick time so they wouldn't feel as if they have to come or lose a day's pay?
It depends on what, everyone's individual.
Okay.
It, it depends on what they have. And they can still, they can still take um sick leave. They just wouldn't be paid for it. Um, which again is, is a, a, could be a double edged sword. Um, but there's, there's job protection there is what my point is. They also, depending on what they have for sick leave, if they've put it in the sick bank, they could have some added protection there. Again, we're gonna work with our staff and we have to be reasonable. It's, it's, you know, we don't want anybody in the building that's sick.
Are you going to need to do any um memorandums of understanding with the different groups?
Yes. So um, you saw the, the demand to bargain um letter, I think I shared that out with everybody from the teachers' union. Uh, I, we were supposed to meet last week and then a store, and I spent hours and hours at the emergency operations center um and, and making sure things were set with the, the water station, things like that. We are going to meet, I think it's Thursday, um, I believe it's Thursday uh this week to talk over. We've gone back and forth on some items. Um, I actually have an additional item to add to that. That was new and it's, it's around the um, the childcare. Um, it actually benefits them. Um, but those are things that, that would have to be approved by the board. We're trying to do this informally at this point in time and then the board would have to approve that. And there's a group that um would have to come together. We are trying to do it without spending money on attorneys. I'll be very. We're trying to do it.
That's great.
Um, a lot of their requests are in our plan. So if it's our, in our plan, our plan becomes policy. Um, doesn't need to be in an MOU. Um, so we have established some trust there, so, but it's, it's coming, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Elena, I can't see you. You're, you're kind of in the dark. So you gotta, yeah, you just gotta wave if you want to. Okay. It's okay if you're in the dark. I just wanted to make sure. I can't see if you had a question. I wanted to make sure you were waving your hand. You need like a flashlight or something for us. Anybody else? Michelle?
Um, so the other question I had is related to the cohorts of students. You have some control over what happens to the students while they're within school. But anything that happens in terms of extracurricular or other things, um, I might suggest that you provide uh your teachers and your parents with additional information so that they um understand the importance of maintaining the cohort. So if parents have some suggestions about um how, for example, if you put a neighbor who they're gonna play with anyway in the same classroom, if they're the same age, you reduce the likelihood of one of them spreading it into both of the classrooms. Same thing with whatever the after-school or the childcare programs are, if you try to maintain the cohorts in the two classrooms, so that you have everybody who's going to the one after-school program in one of the classrooms, you are limiting the exposure of everybody in the other classroom. So I have something I'll send you on that.
Yeah, we, we've kind of said it's, we can control the seven hours and twenty minutes. But if, you know, Mrs. Jones comes to Center School to pick up eight kids in her suburban.
Right, but all of this work will be for nothing if we have one big blowout like that. So we have to educate the parents as well. We have to educate them about the choices. They are often working and are not gonna have coverage.
Correct. They did ask about um having, uh, they, they asked about, we've had them asked about sports teams we've had, uh, which we're not doing all fall sports, folks. It breaks our cohorts. Um, and, and hopefully we have tents on those fields. It, the, the cohorts really, if we do it by neighborhood, you know, I've been asked, can we do it by the local daycare? So if those kids are going to daycare, we're doing, there's so many different cohorts that we're trying to build them by. Uh, it's, it's, we're gonna do the best we can. We're trying, we're keeping siblings together. If they're twins, you know, things like that. Um, we're gonna do the best we can, but thank you. I appreciate that. The, we can, we can definitely educate families on that.
Okay, any other board member who has not spoken yet, like?
Laura had her hand up, her before.
Yeah.
Laura?
Uh, Laura Rodriguez. Um, so um, first I just want to say, I, I liked Anne's idea with Unified Arts because Unified Arts was definitely a concern of mine because they're crossing four cohorts. Um, and even uh, I think the art teacher goes to both schools. So if, you know, there you've got the, the chance, if that teacher gets infected of spreading it really throughout uh both schools. So, you know, any way to try to minimize that. Um, and then the utility, the utility people. Still a concern with that because if they're, if they're popping in to different cohorts as either a substitute or a para, again, they're crossing cohorts. So um, I don't know how many people you're thinking of hiring, but if there's a way to hire some so that they're only working with cer- certain cohorts to again minimize um that crossing over. Um, and then the, the last thing um was kind of what Michelle was getting to. Um, if, I know that you, I know you, you must have teachers that are in the vulnerable populations who may be very uncomfortable about coming back to um in the classroom teaching. And I was wondering if you had looked at them switching to be responsible for the online distance learning portion that they could do and not be in the classroom with students.
Yeah, I didn't get to that, sorry. Um, so we did look at that and I, and we, the, I talked to the area superintendents about that one too. And the issue that we're finding is that, so if I have three sections and I have two sections that are in, though I've now taken, you know, forty kids or I will say thirty kids, um, and I'm now putting thirty kids that would be classes of ten and those thirty kids that are in person now are now sections of fifteen. And then the teacher, what happens is when, if the, if they start coming back from remote learning, I have to put them into the classroom with the teacher that they were working with. So if that, and, and they only need to give us one week's notice. Um, so if my child after one week wants to come back to on, in-person learning, they would have to come back to that teacher that was doing remote learning only. And they now have one student in their physical space and you see what I'm saying? That was where the, the problems arose. We couldn't find a way around it. It's, it's really challenging. We thought it was easier to have the balance of if it was six and six or ten and four.
Okay. Hartford's model had two types of hybrid. They had the hybrid that um people could come back within the one week and then they had something called kind of the online academy, which was for the so that they would not be able to come back in. Now they're, they have a lot more, more resources and, and numbers to make that work, but maybe some other districts that have some models that we could look at.
Yeah, Ellington, and, and again, this is, this is all new, right? Uh, here's my take. Uh, uh, again, I'll be really blunt. Um, Ellington is doing a model where they're, they're opting out. If, if a student picks remote learning, they have to be out for the quarter or the semester. I'm gonna tell you that legally, my interpretation is that if Johnny wants to come back tomorrow to onsite learning, half the life, I can't keep Johnny out of my building. Um, and so that's my kind of legal interpretation is that I have to allow Johnny access to his education. And so even if they've just like, picture it, just like the bus transportation for years. We've always said, can't we just get rid of a couple of buses? They're empty. Well, we could, but as soon as those folks want a bus, we are legally bound to provide it. We have to save a seat for them. I don't see this as any different. And so I, I, I am concerned about that. Uh, and it'll be interesting to see if any of those legal battles occur and how they turn out, because I, I would think they turn out in favor of the student.
Michelle, when I look at this picture of uh the two schools, I see uh the uh teacher's staff, you know, number of, of staff in each building. Uh, we have students, not as many as we would normally have. Uh, we have custodians, we have food service director, things of that nature. And um, you know, I figured the access to the building. In other words, if it was just that group, I would say fine, but I, I, I look at the overall picture and I can see breakdowns that could occur because of the fact that in the food service, for example, they get deliveries from outsiders who would come in. And I'm sure you would, if we do have outsiders coming in, they'd have to check with you. We have delivery agents uh that would bring stuff in for uh the custodians, for example. So you have interaction, all these people. It's not just the staff and kids and administration that's in the building, but it looks like there are others that have access to it, including, and you mentioned Yukon students, for example, will have access, because I think we promised them that they could uh bring their students in.
Yeah.
And you have, um, if there are repairs in the building, for example, inside, you have to bring in workmen to work. And uh, the list goes on and on. So it's not, even though we have these protocols, we have these uh things in place. Um, we still have a large number of, of people that have access to the school.
So we have, we have to address some of those areas, Herb. Um, and any that delivers that we can take outside and not allow the person to come into the building, we're going to do that. Um, and so that, you know, takes care of, if, if there's a food service delivery that we can put on a cart and have our custodians wheel in and, and keep that person outside, we will do that. If we are unable to do that, if we have to have a repairman come in, no one is coming into our buildings without masks on. Uh, and I, I'm, our, our medical advisor is adamant about this and, and so am I. Um, even students, if there's, we expect very, very, very few students. Um, and, and exceptions that someone would be able to come into school without a mask. And if they have a medical diagnosis that they can't come into school with a mask, they're probably going to be receiving accommodations. They're probably gonna be learning from home. And so when we start.
We'll check their mask, but nothing else.
Right. So a, any of those folks that are, were entering in, they're, if we allow a repairman, that repairman is getting six questions, COVID questions. Could I take their temperature? Yeah, I could, but it's, it's, the reason we're not is because there's false readings and things like that. But we can still take in, we're gonna take as many materials as we can in without, and again, this gets back to the utility people. Laura, I understand your point, but interventionists are going into cohorts. We're gonna break cohorts with several people. But remember, do, and this is not against children, don't, please don't take this wrong. I trust adults a great more than I do children to not touch their face and to wash their hands and to sanitize. That's why we're um doing it the way we're doing it and not moving students. And so, you know, without the utility people, without some of these positions, we are stuck. If we don't have a person, if that teacher's out, I have to put somebody in there and I'm gonna break the cohort. One way or the other, I have to put somebody in there. Special education will be in class and in pullouts.
Well, the world is, we do have a lot of, a lot of people that are going to be going in and out, including uh some of these monitors that you've mentioned that will be necessary.
Correct.
A lot of people that we don't have very much control over, really.
We don't have control over them from the standpoint of um and, you know, do they, they have to follow our protocols. That's the control that we have over them. If it's a repairman and we can do it after hours, we will, uh, because the building is gonna be sanitized at the end of the day. We have to allow some people in, but we're not gonna allow, you know, so I'll give you the Yukon example and, and, and I'm glad that parent made that comment tonight because that, that came up several times last night. Um, it's actually, and I don't know if that parent is still on, um, but that is actually on our agenda tomorrow um for Eastern Highlands. It, it is on our agenda and it says the Yukon Effect. We'll be talking about it tomorrow, so more information to come on that. But um, we, we have a huge uh population of Yukon students that typically come through our buildings to read the students, their interns, their juniors. We have shrunk that significantly and so it's, we're looking at a few interns and a few student teachers uh between the two buildings. Um, and, you know, I, I've said, and I talked to the superintendent Mansfield today, that um, that we're meeting actually with, uh, and she already had her meeting. I just saw an email today. Um, we're meeting with all the supervisors of those student teachers and we're gonna be clear with them. Can I, can I control what they do outside of the seven hours and twenty minutes they're in the building? I cannot. But if I see something that is, is something that's alarming, can I say, you can't come back in the building? Absolutely. The other piece of that is, let's be honest, it takes, this takes a community. If we have one family that is not being safe and, and following health protocols, that's all it takes. It doesn't have to be a repairman. It could be a family. And so this is a community effort. And if people don't, if people want to avoid the remote learning option because they don't want to, they can't stay home with their kids because they have to work, they should follow those health protocols because that's what's gonna keep us safe and in school. So I understand that the, the points, they're all valid. Um, all I can do is, is control as best I can. I will have the Yukon conversation because it's uh important for me to have. Um, I don't know what that outcome will be, because they also might be someone that we are um relying on. They are someone that, when our interns come in, they have their bachelor's degree, and if I have a teacher that's out, I could put that person in. And they're as close to a certified teacher as they come. So those are things that, there's pros to it as well that could save us. It's just a challenge of the balance of what's reasonable and what makes the most.
The other question I have is in regard, Wellington, we're very fortunate and we haven't had too many cases. We have enough, but quite a few. Not as many as some towns. And you mentioned that we're tied in with all the way to the Rhode Island border on this. What are the chances of us not, can they change that and break the district down a little different?
Yeah, that was, so the, when they made those, they, they did them by these big chunks of a, a number, numbers of towns. And I'm hoping that that's only gonna be one statistic. There, there, they did add a, a secondary factors, I think they called it, and those secondary factors are more local. We have to use that. I, I mean, it's just if some, some, you know, someone that's that number of miles away from us on the Rhode Island border has a breakout, we should be able to make our decisions and we should be able to do that with Eastern Highlands and they should support it. So I'm hoping that's gonna be the case, Herb. Um, and the other thing, and the reason why that's most important, we're one of the border towns. If you go west and Tolland has a breakout, they wouldn't technically pump up our numbers, even though they're right next door. So we, we have to use some logic in, in, you know, this to, to make sure we're making logical decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Anne has her hand up.
Okay, Anne.
She's muted, Catherine. Hold on, Anne.
Um, as a follow-up to that, are Mansfield and Ashford in our region?
Yes.
So that, oh, good. So that if one of us had to close, yeah, okay.
Yep.
That's good.
They are.
Okay, has everyone had an opportunity now to speak their piece? Anyone else on the board who has not spoken would like to speak at this time? Okay, if not.
Let's talk about.
Bill, you got anything you want to wrap up on that or?
Let's go to, let's move to opening expenses. Let's, let's move right to that, Herb, because it's next.
Okay.
Catherine, can you allow me to share my screen? Please? So you got, the board got a rough copy of this. And as I mentioned, this is changing at the speed of light. So I wanted, this is actually my working document that I shared with you. I have to find a way to get you out of here. And I wanted to share with you, give you a sense of what I'm looking at. Sorry, I'm just moving you so I can see you on screen. So I rearranged this because I didn't like how it went out to you and it wasn't clear. It was wild to look at, but it's the same numbers. It was really confusing the way we had it. So we reorganized it. And this is a working document. This is intended to be a working document as we go and we're just adding to it. The first thing that's on here is utility staff. And this is the six people, it is six people that the, the committee is recommending. If we don't need them for substitutes that day in any position, which I doubt will happen, we would put three to center and three to hall. We would distribute them evenly and they would be consistent. They would be working eight hours a day and they would be working, we believe 78 days. It says August 31st to December 31st. That is a whole part. Where I'm going to advocate tonight that we change our start date. These folks would be bus monitors, cleaning support, duty coverage, substitute teachers. They would be utility people. They would do it all. We had mentioned insurance and we had mentioned, what, what will somebody come in and really do this job for? Is someone going to come and do this job for $12 an hour, which is minimum wage? I don't know, folks. I have no idea. What I'll tell you is if we offer benefits and, and how I'm going to pitch this is I would like to hire these six people through the holiday break. I would like the ability to see what comes in. And when I say that, if someone comes in and has a bachelor's degree, they have the ability to be a substitute teacher for us. I would hire, like to hire them at a higher rate. If someone comes in and, and only has a high school diploma, but they could do the work for us and they can only pay a paraprofessional sub, maybe that's a lower rate for us. And I would work with those people individually on, on the rates. Now, why the color coding? I learned that when you, because of the Affordable Care Act, the more you pay someone, the higher the percentage that you could charge them for their insurance, which is what you see for the color coding. So let's just talk salary first. If we were going to hire these people through December, your salary cost for $12 an hour, if it was six people, the total cost would be the $44,928. If you pay them 1350, you'd be looking at $50,544, $15 an hour, you see the $56,000. Remember that our minimum wage is $12 an hour. Remember that a substitute teacher with a bachelor's is making around the 1350 hours. So that's the reason I want a little flexibility in this. That's what I would ask for. So let's, I'm going to package this with benefits. These people, I can't tell you the number of time the committee said, oh, the utility people could do that. And we talked about something else and they would say, oh, the utility people could do that. It came up a lot. When we talk about insurance, we are required to provide insurance. This is not an option. If we have someone that's working 30 plus hours a week, we have to provide insurance. Are there ways around this? Yes, there are. You could be under 30 hours and you could save some money. But to Michelle's point, I think you're running the risk that if that person does not have insurance, that there's a chance they may come to work sick. I would advocate for this, for these people to be, get, get the wage through December and, and have insurance. It would be, the cost for the insurance rates, it, it's, there's not a huge difference to me from the board and, and I'll explain what I mean when I say that. So the numbers that you see there are for four months. You could provide a waiver of $500. If we get, I, I've already heard there's a couple of people that are interested that are in their early twenties. They might be on mom and dad's insurance. If they could stay on mom and dad's insurance and we can give them a little, hey, reason to do that. You give them $500 for no insurance, it saves the board some money. I am trying to match this to the WESS group to a degree and I'll explain that, why I'm looking at doing that. There is a law, the MIRA law, that you see a little bit lower down, the Municipal Employees Relations Act, that requires that after 120 calendar days, that I have to then go back to the union and say, if we want to continue this, we have to negotiate this. If we believe it's a temporary employee beyond this, I don't know if we can just sign an NOU, MOU to continue. We might have to add them to the union, which is why I'm trying to match their ballpark rates. I'm not going to pay them higher than, than anyone in that union, right? But their benefits would match. The HSA deposit of 62.5% of the deductible would be a match on a monthly basis. Their WSS insurance, they pay, the board pays 84%, those employees pay 16%. We could adjust that depending on how you want to do it. And the way I look at it is if we then charged someone we hired more for insurance, I'll give you the $15 an hour example right there. If you look at this green right here, that we could charge them 24%. And if they take single, the board is paying 2,400 and the employee is paying 762. Whereas if they went to the, the, and that's over the four months. If they went to WESS afterwards, they would actually increase, they would pay, get a kind of a bonus because they'd be paying only 16% as opposed to 24, if that makes sense to you. So they'd be paying about $254 less over four months. Okay. So just want to give you a sense of that. So this Affordable Care Act that's down here, this section is the percentage and it's just a, it's a calculation. You pay this amount, here's what you could, the most you could charge them for insurance. If you wanted, you could pay someone $15 an hour and still match the 16% that is the WESS amount. That's really where I'm looking for guidance from the board and, and to vote on, can I hire these people? This is the amount for the HSA. So a single HSA deposit of $130 per month, if they're a single person, single insurance, that the times six employees would be a total of $780. E plus one, the family is the same thing. That is the 260 per month times six is the 1,560. The max cost here for insurance for six people would be this amount. And basically where I'm getting that from is if you did the 16%, which is what the WESS number is, and you added that to what we would have to pay for the HSA deposit, that's how you get that amount of money. So that's what I have for the utility people. I will, listen, I, I told you I'm going to be really blunt about this. I don't know how we do this plan without these folks. What happens if we go remote? If we hire these people, we guarantee them work through December, whatever it is, 23rd. Is there work for them to do if our students are remote? My answer is yes. We're still going to, we're going to send buses to deliver lunches this time. They could be the person that's doing that. We still could do a ton of painting in our buildings that we would pay a painter a ton of money to do. We could put some people on painting spaces. We could hire the, have them tutoring students that need additional support in, in working with students one-on-one or in small groups. They could be, if a teacher is out remotely and they could substitute teachers, there's a ton of things that we could still have them do. And that was one of my concerns. What do we do with them if we go remote? Are there still, still things we could do? My answer is yes. We could make it so that we, you know, would, would fill their day with meaningful things and they're not just hanging out. If we shut down for five days, two to five days because of a positive case, they're going to be the ones that are in the building with our cleaning staff, helping disinfect the buildings. So again, taking this as something that I think is critical and the committee thinks is critical to this plan. They are temporary. I, I, I don't, if, if these people get added to the union and we, because we need them to finish out the year until COVID goes away, I would not fill these positions beyond June. And I, you have to negotiate this even to go into January, to be honest with you. You have to negotiate this. But if you go beyond that point and you go, want to have them, for them to be able to come back in September, we would have to have a conversation and we would have to agree to fill those positions. There are positions in the WESS union right now that are not filled. So this is not unheard of. Okay. So it's not like there's, there's things that we're creating something that's always going to be there. Questions around this plan, the utilities members, the insurance or what they would be doing? Okay. So my request then, this is a separate vote. This is not budgeted. And if you want, I will go through all of these things and, and get to a vote at the bottom, if that makes more sense. So you can see, I'm really going to only ask you to vote on two items tonight, unless you want to vote on more. The utility staff is one of them and, and the, the next item is, is another one. Would you like to wait until I go through, Herb, to see the items and where I believe the money can come from?
Yeah, might be a good idea.
Okay. Donna has her hand up.
Donna?
Catherine, hold on. She's unmuteing you, Donna.
Sorry, I had to go out of the share screen.
Actually, you can, you can leave that up. My question is, it sounds like after a certain period of time, the utility staff would need to become part of, what, what is the WESS, by the way?
It's the support staff group. It's custodians, secretaries, nurses, paraprofessionals. That's a large group. So we would have to create a position within that union. And that's what that MIRA act is about, that law. It's 120 calendar days.
So it sounds to me like it would be an incentive. You find good people and you hire them under one of the, not the yellow section, but one of the other sections. And then if it crosses over to the 120, it would be an incentive for them to stay because then they would be paying less towards their health insurance. So it might be best to start with one of the other color codes you have. And then if they need to stay longer, move them into the other section. And then they would have a benefit of staying with us if you feel that there's somebody you'd like to keep on staff.
Yep. Any other questions about that? I, I don't, I agree with Dawn. Anne, can you unmute Anne, please, Catherine? Oh, did we lose Anne? She's off my screen, so I don't know if she, she.
Yeah, I, I can't unmute her.
I wonder if she just lost her connection.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. And meanwhile, I'm forgetting, oh, what would the total be, Phil? What would an approximate total be if you hired these six people?
Well, I mean, you could max it out and my ballpark initially was $100,000 to get through the December. And that, that $100,000 and basically what I'm looking at is this 56,000. If everybody made $15 an hour, I'm trying to do the max. I don't believe that we should hire everyone at max unless they're that qualified. But that, that would be the 56 plus the 47. And so those are the two numbers that you would add together. So it's a little over $100,000. You know, if it was the 56 and the 46, it's spot on. It's $100,000. So it's around that number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Questions?
All right. So let me continue the, the money, roll this down. So these are, so here's, here's the other big item that I will say is not budgeted and I think is critical to our plan. I have talked to several tent companies and we are, I don't know of any other schools that are, are doing this. I did see a school, I believe it was Illinois, that actually created an entire outdoor school system with tents. And that's so that they could not wear masks and have more space. Tents are expensive to rent. We started looking at tents that were, and I'm, you're going to laugh at me, but I'm going to show you my little grid here. This is, I, I've done the exact dimensions. I know how many students can go into a tent six feet apart and take their masks off and chairs. And so.
Is this an open tent or does it have sides on it?
Great question. It has to be open, Herb. As soon as you put sides on it, it becomes a building and you have to wear a mask. So these are just top tents. They're frame tents. They are no side. So if it's windy, it's, it's windy, they would be staked down in our fields. Unless they're freestanding, they could be on the blacktop. It depends on the type of tent we get. Be honest with you, it's, it depends on what's available, what we can get. This example that's on there is that, so you need a commercial 30 by 40. Those tents are about $6,500. And, and so it costs about $500 a day to rent a tent that size. So rental is just not a great solution. I did talk to a company as, actually today, that is a rental company and they have seasonal rentals, which I'm looking at too. And one of the things I talked to them about was in their seasonal rental, and Herb, you said this earlier, you can only do this into October, we go outside until it's 20 degrees. If, if we're lucky and these tents could be up in December, we would use them. Kids might have jackets on, but I think they're going to enjoy the mask breaks. I think they're going to need them. And so the tents are critical in that. What she said to me today was, listen, you could leave those tents up when there's snow. You just got to rake the snow off of them and have somebody out there. Because if you put a foot of snow on it, you're taking a chance and you're liable for it. I thought that was really interesting. So, you know, our folks go into show, could that be something that we're looking at? And so the tent cost for me, again, I mentioned, why, why spend money on things that you're not going to use? This is something, if we go remote, what happens? I don't think COVID is just going to disappear. If we come back to school, I think that students are still going to need masks and we're still going to need mask breaks for a little while. If it comes to a point where we've purchased these tents and we're done with them, I fully believe the town would want two frame tents. Willington Day, you know, our promotion ceremonies. We could take two of these and keep them and store them and use them. And there is a huge market to buy used tents. We could sell these, the town could sell these and make probably half of the money back from the cost of a new tent. And so, you know, if we purchase six, and that's the number I'm recommending, three per school, and that would allow mask breaks every hour for every class. That's the number of tents we, we really need and for instruction. And that would allow you to keep two and sell four when you're done. And you potentially, after $39,000 of spending that amount of money, you could recover, you know, potentially $14,000 by selling each tent back for $3,500. So those are, that's kind of my thought process of what I'm looking at is how, how we, what do we do with those when we're done? So that was an idea. So those are two of the big ideas. Any, any questions about the tents at this point?
Oh, secure everything, safe, safety wise.
They are. They're anchored down. They're commercial grade. I will tell you, one of the big concerns I have, Herb, is these are, for whatever reason, COVID is stopping, it's really having an impact on manufacturing. And they're having a hard time getting the tubes. So there's some lead time on these. If you approve this tonight, I'm ordering tomorrow. And I can't guarantee they're going to be in for the start of school. And so we're going to have to, you know, potentially see if we can rent some tents or something until we, if we buy these for a period of time. That's one of the issues, but they're very secure. They're, if they're freestanding, they get blocks or barrels that they're anchored down to. You can actually lower them, you know, take the tents off if you have a hurricane or a tropical storm. And you can also, you know, with snow, but we would put these on soccer field or hall, we put them on the. we put them on the fields and blacktop at center. But, you know, this, this.
How many, how many students do you say we could put in each, each tent?
So a 30 by 40 allows us to put 20 students in. And when I say 20 students, that, you know, it's really 20 spots that are six feet apart. And so you need a spot for a teacher, you need a spot for a paraprofessional. They have, you know, that's, you need the spaces. So we're looking at, and those are my measurements, tents come in all sorts of sizes. You could do a 30 by 40, you could do a 26 by 34. We've done all the math to figure out what size we would need to fit those numbers of students. If our numbers look like 16 students is enough that we're going to have, we'll buy a smaller tent and, and save a little bit of money there against what's available. Donna has her hand up, Herb.
Donna?
Catherine's unmuted.
Muted?
No, I'm unmuted, thank you. Um, as far, I mean, I have one of those 10 by 10, 12 by 12 pop-up ones. And it takes four of us to put that up or, you know, I'm looking at this, how many people does it take to put up? Do you have to have, hire somebody to come in to do it? Is this something the custodial team could do? Just the logistics of putting it up and, and if we have something like we had this past week, taking them down quickly?
I've talked to our Public Works Director who's done this before. And, you know, one of the things that is an option for us is we hire someone to help us set up the first one with our Public Works Team and our custodial team, all hands on deck. We make sure we know how to do it right and do it with the professionals that rent these out. They just have, they all have the same, they're either frame tents or pole tents, that's what everyone has. That would be a peace of mind for us so that we make sure they're set up right and then they could set up the remainder of them. It takes some time, Donna. This is not a five minutes up and down. You need a special, you know, they, they sell tent jacks, actually, or what they're called, to lift up the tent so you can set it up. I believe we could do that with, with products that we already have here in town with Public Works. And I know Troy has done this before, so I believe it's something we could do. We would have to prep for, if we saw a storm coming, we would want to make sure we get, if we purchase these, we want to protect our investment, that we take the net, the tents down. If we're going to have high winds, that we go out, we've checked all of our, you know, to make sure our fasteners and everything is secured and anchored down well, so.
And, and then, um, if the pieces come apart, I'm guessing that they would be labeled in some way, shape or form so that you know how to put it back together? And only because we've had to take a lot of things apart, it helps if they're labeled on what goes back together where? Or if you have multiple tents so that you know when you find a piece, that it goes to tent number one or whatever? Okay.
They're, they're all, they, they come with directions and, and we can label them any way we want. If they're not labeled, when we take them down, we, I mean, we would suggest that, obviously, if they weren't labeled, we would do that. It's a puzzle, for sure. Let's make that puzzle easier. Okay, what I'd like to do is just fly through the rest of these and then come back to those two, if that's okay? So what are some of the other costs that we're looking at? Potentially tutors to, to support the in-person instruction. This could be special education related, this could be intervention related, it could be related just because we're providing, we, we have to provide the same level of education for students that are learning remotely. This is an hourly rate that's contractual. We threw in 100 hours, there's the cost, okay? Long-term subs. If, again, this, this could go away some to a degree. After 40 days, I have to have a certified person in there. But under that 40 days, if, if someone has to be out for a few days, I could put a utility person into that classroom and they would become the sub. Remember that we budgeted for $20,000 for one long-term substitute? I'm already going to tell you that I have a long-term substitute that I have to hire for one of our teachers. So I'm already going to use that money that's there. The other lines that are sub-lines could be, could be eaten up fast if we don't have utility people. So could that money help provide some of the support for utility people? Absolutely it could. But we're going to need, you know, long-term subs. I'll be honest with you, one of the harder ones right now for us is, is nurses. I'm worried about nurses because they're, they're always hard to find as it is. And we, all the superintendents have pretty much said, if we don't have a nurse, we're closing our buildings. It's going to be an emergency closing. How can we be open during a pandemic without a school nurse? I, I just don't know how we do that. They're expensive. And so we put in the number of days, and these are estimates based upon our prior data. And it's a pandemic, folks, so this could be low, right? But I put the number in there. And this is a big number. You start looking at $249 a day, it's, it's big box. Some of the other items that get to ventilation, we, we were required to put in specific, it's kind of like an R value for, the higher the R value for, for insulation, the, the, you know, better it keeps the temperature in the room. This is the same thing, the filters, the higher the R, the better it is, I believe. R13 is the minimum. And most schools did not have this. They're actually very hard to come by. We ordered a bunch of them, they have to go into every spot we have a ventilation unit, which is every classroom. And all of our filters will be R13. Again, not a huge cost, it's within our budget, but I, I need you to know that there's, some of these things are things we normally wouldn't do. The inspection that we had Colliers do, $2,000. Their recommendations, this is an estimate for what it's going to cost to put the rooftop unit back on to Center School and connect it to the duct work that's there. That includes the opening of the roof and maintaining the warranty of the roof and all that. It could be a little bit higher, it could be a little bit lower, I don't have the actual estimate yet. I did talk to the, Mike McCoo is the Board of Finance Chair. We talked about, some of these things are going to be going to CIP, that committee is supposed to be connecting back, and this could be something that could go to CIP and they could cover. Either way, folks, we, we have to do this. We have to get the ventilation what it should be. And then the ventilation, this is the bigger one. This is the one where there's no ventilation in that lower hallway, meaning there's no intake or exhaust in those classrooms because during, code in the 50s didn't require it. This is a ballpark. This is about $5,000 per unit to, if you picture, I can't remember what those air conditioners are called, splits, it's a split. You picture a split that they basically cut a hole in the wall and they put that air conditioner right in and it has the vent right out of it. This is the same type of thing, you cut a hole in the wall, you put it in the individual classroom, it only handles that classroom. It's a cheaper solution than doing duct work for all of it and putting a rooftop unit on, okay? So again, will we have to get quotes on that and do a lot of more investigation? Yes. That's an item that's going to go to CIP. Excuse me. One of the solutions we came up with, and this is Center School specific, is that our custodian, custodial hours, we can adjust them to later in the day if we change our alarm setup. It doesn't impact whole school as much because they're out of school earlier. Students are out at 2:30. At Center, they're out an hour later. So we have to cover every hour, student hour by a custodian. We are installing a, a new addition to our key fob system that will allow our teachers, they're still going to have programmed hours, they can't just go in when they want. But our custodian won't need to be there until 8:15 in the morning. And what that does is it puts, pushes the afternoon custodian later in the day so that kids are gone, so they have more time to clean. This fob system will turn off the alarm so teachers can get into the building and not set off the alarm. And the custodian will get an email to say, Shelly Jones is in the building, the alarm is off at 7:05. And we will program their fobs. It will also upgrade our key fob software for more security. This was a double benefit for us. To me, for me to pay overtime for a custodian, time and a half, we would exceed that $1,000 in a month. So this is money well spent. Our custodial supplies, as you can imagine, this is a big ticket item. We have spent almost our entire cleaning budget by December. We had to buy bigger trash barrels for classrooms because the trash barrels that were in the classrooms couldn't hold all the lunches. When students eat in the classroom, breakfast and lunch, you need a bigger barrel. We've purchased those barrels, we have all of our bags, all of our cleaning chemicals are coming in, we have the right chemicals that we wanted. Touchless dispensers are on back order, but we're, we're adjusting on that. We have the gloves, we have the hand sanitizer, for the most part, the hand sanitizer, some of it's on back order, but we'll, we'll be ready for that, what we need. We already have our backpack sprayers in. We budgeted $24,000 for supplies and we'll have spent 21 by December. This is an estimate, folks. We are estimating what, how much hand soap, how much sanitizer we believe we're going to need through December. If we go, it could be less if, depending on the number of kids in the building. It could be more if we come back full-time, everyone's there, could be more. We don't know. This is one of those that we're going to have to wait and see and the, Steve and Matt will be monitoring this very closely so we're not without. We had to hire, sorry, we had to bring, buy all sorts of PPE, the personal protection equipment, gloves, masks, gowns, face shields for staff. We budget $4,000 for nursing supplies. Our 12, we have a 12-week supply and it costs $9,600. If the student forgets a mask or a staff member forget, forgets a mask, we have to provide it and we have that material to do it. How long will it last? We think through November, but again, we won't know until we start to live. We will be able to get more P E, PPE. Cafeteria sales is on here because we're worried about a loss in ala car. We are trying, I, I haven't had a conversation with Stephanie about this yet, but I will. We're trying to find a creative way for students to be able to order ala car items online so they can be delivered because ala car items help our sales. And so I, I, I'm worried that we're going to have a loss here and that's why it's on here. I put $5,000. It could be more, it could be less. You still need the same number of people to prepare all the meals, but you're just not selling as many of those ala car items, which could impact us. The school supplies, this is a ballpark. We, we just ordered all the Sterilite bins for every student, I mentioned that already. We ordered enough for every student. It was about $10,000. You'll be happy to know that I was very frugal with desks. The desks that I wanted would have cost $21,000. They were desks, again, I was trying to apply the long-term solution. We are going, we've always been going towards tables for collaboration. We didn't have the desks that we needed because we've been getting tables. And you can't put as many students in a room with the tables because they're big. So we need to buy desks. I was looking at rolling desks on wheels that could go into different shapes together, they're collated for collaboration. It was better, we won an auction on GOV deals through Killenly Public Schools for 50, actually, I think it was 60 desks. We paid $616 for those desks. They're used, but we're making it work. All right? So there's my frugal thing, it was $12.32 a desk. I've mentioned this, this is, could probably be in PPE, but we ordered all the clear masks for staff. There were 432 masks worth $1,200. We ordered lanyards for every student so they can clip their mask to it, they had to be breakaway, they had to be the right length. So if they take their mask off for just a minute when they're outside for their quick mask break, they're not dropping it on the ground, put it in their pocket, their hands are not all over it. We ordered some lanyards, so every student will have a lanyard. And then we have a kid check, the kid check is the app I was mentioning for the sign-in, sign-out. It's cheap and they're great. They said that actually if we go remote and we don't need it, they would pause our subscription, we wouldn't pay that month. I've never heard a company say that. So that's why we're, we're going that route and it's pretty easy to set up. So lots of money here, how do we pay for it? This is what we've come up with. We have not received a dime. We were told when we were getting CARES Act money, I, I kind of chuckle when people say, you've gotten COVID money, you, you got it, they said that you got it. We haven't gotten a dime. We had, our CARES Act application is in, we are supposed to get $60,567. That is based upon our Title I money, I believe, that's how they came up with that number. And is there going to be additional funding because this is, CARES Act is now old? Is there going to be additional funding? Potentially, it's been talked about, yes, the governor would just talked about that the other day with the 266 million. Well, guess what? This CARES Act is part of that 66, 266 millions, it's factored into that. There's only over about 100 million that's additional. So, that we were told. So I don't know if we're getting additional money or not. I'm waiting on that CARES Act funding and we have to spend that first. There's potential salary savings. The kindergarten position not being filled and, and I would like your approval not to fill that Spanish position. I'm not trying to get rid of Spanish, I, I would love to have it. We don't have any qualified candidates and it's a shortage area and we have a crazy schedule right now that we're trying to, to deploy. I would just save that money for, for COVID-19 stuff right now and then come back to that in the later. Medicaid funds, we have $29,000 in our account. It has to be special education related, that could pay for some of the items that are connected to special education. We have $29,000 in our non-Lapsian Fund account. Remember, that's that 1%, 2%, it used to be a 1% account, it's now called a 2% account. That's a non-Lapsian Fund, that's what we have in there currently. We have to ask for it to apply that money, but this could be money that we could apply for that. The last part of that is, you're not going to do it tonight, but I would say that you should plan on doing this at your September meeting, is that we should be, when we close the books for 1920, my suggestion is that you should be asking for 2% of the 1920 budget. You are returning for over $400,000, we believe, at this point in time. And 2% of the budget is $173,000. You could apply that to these costs that you need to do to make this plan work. Hopefully we get more State aid, I don't know. And then the additional funds, that 226,000 that's left, I hope they take that money and they say, hey, you have some priority projects that are ventilation related, use that money to do that. So I'm hoping that they're not banking on this money. I talked to Donna about this, they, they were not building this, this was not counted into the budget, but this money could be used for, for, to support those costs. Is that up to us, the board? No, you can only ask for it. What I'll say is if we want to open and stay open and do it safely, it costs money. So some of these, whether you, you know, you, if you do it short-term, I tried to only bring things that made sense. You're going to notice I did not put desk shields there. Desk shields, the plexi shields, they have to be a certain material. They could cost a fortune. And if we don't come back, if we go remote, there's no additional use for those. I don't know where we'd ever use those again. So they're not on our cost estimate right now. So at this point in time, those are the bills. Some of these things have already been ordered because we had to make sure they're in. The two that I would really like you to act on tonight are the utility folks and the tents. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on any of the items, but those are the two that I'd like you to give me permission to, to go ahead and do.
I have one question, Phil, in regard to the ventilation. We have filters, inspection, ventilation at CES and HMS and $70,000. It seems to me, I was reading somewhere where ventilation is a very significant and important part of this whole program, but you, depending on how you install it, in other words, you install it and the ventilation takes a year out of the room, that's one thing, but if it brings it back in, you're bringing in fresh air, to be sure, but you're still moving droplets around from the kids and staff in the room. You know, it just, it spreads it around. So there's a safety factor involved. Is that, is that true or is that?
Yeah, so they, they are talking, and, and don't quote me on this, there's a certain number of air exchanges that you're looking for every hour that help, you know, basically kind of improve safety. And that actually gets the droplets out and that's what the exhaust is. And that actually gets the droplets out. And that's what the exhaust is from the room. What's in the room and the intake is coming from outside. Where newer buildings are struggling right now is where, and this was nursing homes you saw too, is where the exchanges. They share rooms. So from one room to the next is the same ventilation, same ductwork. And where we're, what we're trying to do is actually, our classes wouldn't be connected for the intake. The exhaust all goes out the same way, but the intakes are separate. So they wouldn't be sharing. That's, that's.
Sharing, but it would be just in that, in that individual room that they would have this. How many rooms are you going to install this in?
So we believe that at Hall School, they need 12 of these. Because not one room has ductwork and there could be a cheaper solution. I just haven't had time to investigate it yet. But we know that those individual units by room, just talking to Collier briefly during our visit. Their visit here, that that is a cost effective solution that can happen faster than duck worked, but so.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Any comments? So Phil, once we get this together. This will keep us going till, you said December? And then at that time, we'll have to.
We'll be revisiting, yeah, we'll be revisiting these every month, to be honest with you, Herb. And I'll give you updates to let you know how we're, how we're doing. Where we're finding cost savings, where things are more expensive. I'll let you know that as we go along the way. I believe that there's money in the budget right now, based upon what's here. That, you know, you could safely do the tents and the utility people through December. But I wouldn't want you to do anything beyond that point for either of those, you know, specifically the utility folks. And I guess I, I would like you to, in your, if there's a motion to approve those two items, the tents and the utility staff with insurance, is to do them up to a maximum. Or just say to be working with, within the parameters that were presented this evening. Up to that $15 an hour and up to 24% of their benefits. And then no more than this amount, 39,000 for the six tents.
Now, did you say that you already purchased some of these items?
Yeah, the items that we've already purchased are things that are within our budget and within my purview. Things like, you know, the ventilation filters. We have budget money that, for project money during the summer. Things that come up, they, they're using some of that money for things like that. So instead of painting a classroom, they bought some, some filters. This cheap project here for $1,000 for the fobs. Those are things that I've already approved. They're already in the works. Yeah, those things. The custodial supplies are already in our budget. We've already, you know, purchased those items. It's when we go beyond the number, because we need more than what, you know, I'll need your support and figure out where that money comes from.
Do we have enough masks for staff and?
Yep.
For students and stuff.
Correct. Yeah, the desks, same thing. Like the desks weren't budgeted, but we can take those out of supplies. So those are the things that we've done. Lanyards came out of supplies. It's really the items. At some point, if we start running out of cleaning supplies and that budget is gone. We need to figure out where the rest of that money is going to come from. And that's where, you know, maybe some of that return money could, could impact or open positions or whatever it is. And that's why I'm really only asking tonight for the tents and the utility folks. I will have to do more research by your September meeting for this ventilation project. So that you could approve it and send it to CIP with options. And so they could then, because I would like that ventilation project to be done by November 1st. Because if we have to start closing windows because it's cold, we have to have that ventilation system in place. But really, again, the only thing I'm looking for tonight is utility staff and tents.
Yeah, can you put your, on the utility staff? That's, that's six people who are planning to hire.
That is what the committee is recommending, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Donna has a question, Herb.
Donna?
Actually, it's just a special request. Especially since this is going to be a working document. If somewhere on it, you could put the date. And then email it to us. That way we can kind of keep, keep them chronologically or keep track of what we've discussed and what's changed. Just to kind of help keep us focused on what's going on and what's transitioned.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, this document is actually, if there's other funds, the reason we're all putting on this one, this working document too, is if additional funds come in, we want to know exactly what we had to purchase and why and keep it on one. So that's a good idea. We can easily do that.
Thank you.
Phil, can you send me a copy of this?
Oh yeah, I can send this to everybody. I'll send you an updated version. I literally, I worked on it again today because we had added some items today.
Because I can't copy on this computer I have.
I will send you all this in a PDF, an email. And if you want a paper copy, I can, we can send it there.
And also any updates and stuff like that, so we can keep track of it.
Yep.
Okay, well, you need a motion. On the utility people and the tents. Anyone like to make a motion?
Donna's raising her hand.
Donna?
Should we do them separately or together before I say anything?
No, let's do them together.
Okay.
Unless someone wants to separate them. But I do it together.
So I make a motion that we give Phil the authority to purchase up to six tents. Up to a total of $39,000. And I make a motion that he be authorized to hire up to six utility staff. Including insurance for up to six people for a maximum of $100,000. Is that worded fairly?
I just wasn't sure.
More than 100.
I thought, I thought he asked for 100, which is why.
Let me just see what the 56, 160. If you say 104, Donna, I think it's, there's your max.
Okay, so change the 100 to 104.
I'll second that. Tracy Anderson.
Okay, Tracy seconded. Any further discussion relative to the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Would there be a roll call?
Well, we could do a roll call.
Only because we can't, I can't see everybody.
Can't see everyone? Okay, well, we'll have a roll call. Ann?
He's muted. You're muted. Hold on, Ann. You, Ann and Elena Catherine.
Donna?
Donna says yes.
Michelle? Elena?
Yes.
Laura?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
Ann?
I had one question. Would it be better not to put a limit on the utility staff, just in case it costs more than 104, or do we have flexibility?
That was.
Because I think we said up to 104. If it came in a little bit higher than that, would we have flexibility to still go ahead and hire everybody?
I think you're already in a vote and I don't know that you can.
Oh, I can ask a question. Okay, I will, I will support the vote. Aye.
And Herb votes aye. Looks like the motion is passed. It's unanimous. You can move on that, Phil. Take care of that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You can update the document as you will. Okay, anything else on that? If not, we'll move on to old business. This is the 2020, 2021 calendar. And I believe there are some changes in this in regard to SD.
Correct. And so basically, what, here are the changes. So the state has allowed districts to, and I can't see you, sorry. So just shout if somebody needs something. I had to move you out so I could see you, see the screen. The state has allowed districts to only go 177 days with permission. We had 182 student days. And what I would like to do is go announce it now that we're only going to do 177 student days. And the only reason you're going to be allowed to do that is to provide additional professional development. The planning, the adjusting that we're going to need to do and, you know, to make improvements as we go. The teacher year contract would be 188 days still. That wouldn't change. But their number of professional development days, we would increase that. The other portion that's changed, and I'll point those days out in a second. The other thing that's changed here is that I'm requesting that we start after Labor Day. We need as much time, and a lot of districts are doing this, as much time as possible to prepare for this and to provide our staff the professional development they need. Basically, excuse me, what we would do is our first staff development day would be August 31st. And we would use that entire first week as professional development. There might be a meet and greet type thing built into that. There might be half a day that's contractual. That would be room setup. So basically what would happen is Labor Day is the 7th. Students would go to school for four days. And then we would, we put in another staff development day on the 14th. We need to be able to be prepared to pivot. If something changes, if something, you know, we need to do better on, on protocols. If we need to allow teachers time to, to prepare for, you know, more professional development for remote learning or hybrid learning, or whatever it is. We need the time to do that. So that would then be the 14th. Students would then have nine days of school. The week of the 21st would be the first full week of school. We would then have another staff development day on the 28th. Another four days. A full week on the 5th. The 9th is a minimum day. It's an early dismissal for staff development. And then you've got the holiday on the 13th and the staff development again, on, I'm sorry, the 12th, the staff development on the 13th. Again, this breaks up so that when we need to provide our staff, because think about the number of changes we're asking our staff to make here. It's significant. And, you know, all the normal training that we have to do, the DCF. The safety protocols that we have to do, the portrait of the graduates, scientifically researched patient interventions. We didn't do cross-grade share at the end of the year last year. We didn't do that at the start. There's a, I have a whole list of items that are going to be packed into those first five days. And then, you know, we'll do follow-ups on the 14th, the 28th, the, you know, those other days. And so my request is twofold. One, to update this calendar. To meet this. And this would then go out to parents so they understand when our first day of school would be. And then two, the request is, you know, if you approve this calendar, is that, you know, in your vote, you allow me to apply. And they've already said if you're using it for professional development, they're going to approve it. I just need to apply to the state to say, can we go only 177 days? We're adding additional professional development days. So that's my request. Michelle has a question.
Michelle?
No, I was ready to make a motion. So I move that we adopt the Wellington Public Schools calendar for 2021. As presented and authorized the superintendent to work with the State Department of Education to allow for the lower number of student days.
Elena Testa, I seconded.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Discussion.
Donna has her hand up.
Donna?
So is there a reason that you selected Mondays for staff developments instead of Fridays?
We were trying to do the number of days because the holiday. We could stagger it some, but we were trying to be consistent with, with what day was going to be off. So parents weren't saying, well, is this the Monday or is this the Friday?
Okay.
This is one of the reasons we were trying to do it.
All right, that makes sense.
Any other comments? Tracy?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's important for staff development and being able to reassess the situation frequently and giving time to, to, to develop whatever needs to be done. But I also think as far as mental health, there's a lot of anxiety from experiencing summer school with a very small population, but you could feel the anxiety of the families and the students and the staff in the building. And I think by giving us a slow, slower start with fewer days in a row, it's helpful to get that mental break with a longer time in between and to have, even when parent, teachers are doing staff development, it's not the same intensity of being full online, I mean, in-person classings.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have a staff development day, I mean, very beginning because there are so many things that have to be taken care of. And this will give the superintendent and staff an opportunity to get everything in place before classes start. Any other comments? If not, we will vote on adoption of the 2020, 2021 calendar. Ann?
Nope, she's muted.
Yes.
Okay, Donna?
Yes.
Michelle?
Aye.
Elena?
Yes.
Laura?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Herb abstaining. Okay. Okay, we're ready to move. The motion's passed and we're ready to move on to President to speak. This is an opportunity for the public to speak. I don't know whether there's anyone out there listening or not. Do we have any information on that, Phil?
I see Erica Wachinski has her hand up.
Thank you, Herb. Erica Wachinski, first select woman. I wanted to thank the superintendent and his custodial staff, specifically Matt Jensen at Center School. As you know, last week was challenging with the storm came through Wellington. And Hall School is our designated shelter. Due to COVID and needs, we didn't need to open the shelter, but we did have a water station and charging station at Hall School. And without Superintendent Stevens and his staff assisting us, that certainly wouldn't have gone as smooth. So I wanted you all to know what a vital part of the emergency operations in Wellington they played. And thank you all for your time with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it.
Anyone else that's not on camera? Again, if you click participants and then you go down to the lower corner, there's three dots, you can raise your hand.
I think I saw Julie Wright Madden had her hand raised, but she's muted, so she couldn't tell you that.
You do? You see that?
It's not her hand. She had the other reaction, not on the participant's screen.
Okay, sorry. I didn't mean to put my hand up. I was just, I just was pleased with everything that's being done. And I was just giving a reaction.
Thank you. Herb, I think that's it. I don't see any other hands on, on the screen there.
Okay. We'll move along to board comments. Ann?
I'd like to, am I muted or am I okay? All right. I'd like to thank everyone who served on all the committees. You all did so much work with Phil to work out what I think is an excellent plan. And I hope we experienced a whole lot of success with it. I'd also like to congratulate Stephanie in her new position and welcome, I believe it's Claire for second grade.
Okay, Donna? Donna, are you muted or?
I, I'm now unmuted.
Oh, okay.
I, I just want, excuse me, to let everyone know that I appreciate tonight going smoother than I anticipated. Long electrical outages and sleep deprivation do not help me. I'm sure it doesn't help anyone else. So I just, I am thankful that the school was able to be open because I was one of the people there helping to fill up 55 gallon water drums to bring to my home. And I appreciate the time and effort that have gone, it's gone into the reopening. There were some other questions I had that were for clarification on my part. So I know I had emailed them to you, Phil, so we can talk about those at another time. So we don't need to waste everybody's time. But thank you very much and I hope all of you are recovering from the event well.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Michelle?
I want to reiterate the thanks and the creative thinking that went into creating this plan. I think there are a lot of really good ideas in this, as well as the creative thinking about how to secure desks and some of the other items that we needed to start school. I think it's really essential that we, this is a community effort, that we're going to all have to work together and educate each other and educate parents about how we can keep kids safe, not only during the school day, but all throughout the week, because school's only a part of their day. And it's going to take a lot of people thinking and working together about how to create recreation opportunities for our young people and exercise opportunities and other ways that they can socialize using online and other opportunities where we can stay safe and not jeopardize all of this hard work we've done so far. So thanks all.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Elena?
It's Elena Testa. I just would like to say that I'm really impressed with how thoroughly everything was thought through. And I want to thank Phil and especially all the other people who volunteered their time into this process. I'm really, really grateful for your help, for your insights. And also, I would like to say that I see great things, how our town can unite in the tough times and what a great fruit it produces, that unity. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Elena. Laura?
I think I'd just like to restate what everyone has already said so eloquently, to thank Phil and all those who served on the reopening committee for your hard work and just your, your insight and thoughtfulness in coming up with this plan. Also to congratulate Stephanie Knight and the new second grade teacher, who I guess, according to Ann, whose name is Claire, I did not remember, but I'm hoping that's right and I'm not just restate the wrong name. So that's it, thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you. Tracy?
I'd like to just echo everything that everyone else has already said and to add some appreciation for, besides the committee and Phil and the staff in those town hall meetings that have been, I've, I've watched one or listened into one live and also watched on video. And a whole lot of parents are very much involved in asking questions and being a part of the problem solving and solutions with creative ideas. And so I appreciate that whole community Elena was talking about, that we're all coming together to, to do the best we can in a really tough situation.
Thank you very much, well spoken, Tracy. I'd like to reiterate what everyone said about the reopening committee. They've done an excellent job. The superintendent must have attended many meetings. Probably more than, more than we saw printed in the plan. So there's one thing I'd like to mention, and that's something a little different probably, but it's on the Freedom of Information Act. This thing hangs over our head constantly and we want to make sure we adhere to it. And I just want to mention the fact that you have to be careful with emails to all members and also letters to all Board of Education members. Because it could be characterized as approaching a public meeting under the FOI. Not under my eyes, but under the FOI. So, and if it does, it's a violation of the FOI regulations. So just a note that do not send an email or letters to the entire Board of Discussing Board Business. And second, if you receive such an email or a letter, don't reply because if you reply, you open it up more. So just, just be careful on that. If you, if you send me a letter, for example, on any issue, is to one person, it's not to the board. So it doesn't open up a violation or, or anything like that. So just be careful on that. I was thinking about probably when things settle down, if we ever have enough time, that we probably should have a retreat covering the Freedom of Information Act, which is, even if you go through the session, it's still kind of vague and difficult to understand exactly where they stand on their issues. But I'm just cautioning you to make sure that you don't do that because you don't want a violation at any time. And the board doesn't want it either. Okay? Are we ready to adjourn? Make a motion, we adjourn. And Phil, you can't say, you can't second that motion. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? So voted, okay. See you later, stay safe, happy. If you're on vacation, enjoy every moment of it.
Thank you.
Thanks for being there.
Bye.
Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome. So Catherine, if you just want to, once it downloads, I think it's going to go to your computer. Once it downloads, you can just share it in Google. Do you have the, the, I don't, we've had email problems, so I don't know if you're getting our emails. Did you do the last minutes? Oh, you're muted, hold on.
Yeah, and I think I shared them back with.
Brenda?
Brenda, yeah. She was the owner of the document.
Gotcha, okay, so I'll check hers, because we didn't, I don't, we checked my drive, but I don't know if we checked hers.
Yeah, I think she was the owner of the document, so it just went back to her.
When you share this video, will you do me a favor? Just add me to the other one, so if it's not on hers, at least we share it again. And I can see it, perfect.
And, um, yeah, in the last minutes, I just didn't have the last couple of people's board comments because the video had cut off.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, we can just say board, board comment, perfect.
Phil, do we have a teaching negotiation session coming up?
It's, it depends on if they need the, where the MOU goes, Herb.